All right, sir, you are on.
All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Monroe Planning Commission meeting. Let's begin with the pledge of allegiance. I'll go ahead.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone.
Everyone can make sure their microphone's wrong?
Yeah.
I forgot mine, too.
Hey, we're rusty. It's cold.
I know, I know. It's been a week off from Thanksgiving.
Hey, let's go ahead and do roll call, starting to my left. If you could just state your name into your mic, that way we can.
John Greedennis, present.
Tim Easter, chair.
Fred Cuthbertson, president.
Mr. Frederick, chair. Preston Strand, here.
Torrin Nielsen, here.
And I believe you got a call from David Mills.
I did. Chair Commissioner Mills said he would be out this evening.
Okay. All right. Looks like we have a fairly full agenda tonight. If there's any public comments before, it looks like we have a couple of hearings. So if there's any other comments, public comments, prior to those hearings, if you keep those comments to around three minutes or less, we would appreciate it. Anybody have any public comments? We're no public comments, so we can go right into the the public hearing if you're okay with that. Okay. Okay. Welcome, everybody. This is a public hearing, and this is the order of tonight's proceedings, and I'm reading off a script, so this is fairly standard. The order of the proceeding will be tonight. First, there'll be a staff report, then there'll be a public testimony, then there'll be planning commissions, questions of staff, planning commission deliberations, and then a final recommendations. For those that are wish to testify in the hearing tonight, if we could keep them to to three minutes or less, and then we could identify, we can see if there's a need to go longer. This evening, no specific time limit shall apply to any testimony, however, please attempt to keep your comments brief and direct to the criteria, which the decision is going to be made. So persons testifying either orally or in writing may request a continuance to address additional documents or evidence submitted. If this request is made, please identify the new document or evidence during your testimony. And then the describe the, so persons shall testify may request that the record remains open for seven additional days to submit additional written evidence and request for additional, for allowing the record to remain open, should include, let me see, request for allowing the record to be remain open should be included in your testimony. Okay, so we are going to open the public hearing now. Let's begin with the eighth and main partition. Is that the one you want to start with, Steve?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so is there any declarations from the planning commission members of a conflict of interest in the eighth and main minor partition?
I've driven past there many times in my life.
I have driven past there, too. That's okay. Does anybody want to rebut any disclosures? All right. Land use decisions such as the case under consideration this evening are evaluated against applicable criteria for the municipal code and comprehensive plan. A list of applicable criteria for this case is available as a handout at the back of the room, and I think they're actually.
Here, or I have a, actually, they're up at the table up here.
They're up at the table right here.
I put all three up there.
This is a good time to remind those testifying that you should direct your testimony towards the applicable criteria of the of of the case or the criteria of the municipal court or comprehensive plan, which you believe will apply to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city or other parties the opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeals to the state land use board of appeals based on that issue. The failure to the failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to the issue precludes any, precludes an action or damages in circuit court. We will now hear the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first report is for a proposed dividing of a single lot into two lots. This is at 175 North Eighth Street. For those in the commission, this used to be Irwin property, formerly Menard property. So at some point in the past, you probably remember that Mr. Menard had interaction for lots at some point. That was never actually substantiated anywhere, so the the city and the county got it back to one lot. And so Mr. Rose, Stephen Rose, who's the applicant this evening, would like to split it down the middle into two equal sized lots. It is GRA. His proposed lot sizes will be greater than the minimum required for a GRA, so there's no conditions or other things. He does not, his proposal is plan at this point is to place a residence on the northmost partition, and the partitions, by the way, are the very, if you look in the very, very back of your packet, you'll see his his partitions here in the map. But in essence, because of how our land use codes are, this is not a moving of a lot partition, it is actually creation. So it comes before you as a very simple partition approval. In the conditions of this, which is probably the ones I think that we talked about the most, I am going to ask that if he builds or anything gets built on the Main Street adjoining Main Street side, that that the sidewalks, gutters, you know, storm drains, that et cetera, get improved along that. He is, since he's intending on building on the back part of that, and it still serves some residences back there until the city is ready to develop Eighth Street, we're asking for a waiver of remonstrance for improvement of his portion of Eighth Street when when that condition applies. So those are probably the two biggest things. There is adequate sewer water. It's right along Eighth Street there, six inch main. Sewer is right there. The mains for the whole city actually go right up Main Street, so there is no no issue with utilities. There is on that, and this is not part of the conditional use, but just general information. There was a SDC credit that was agreed to amongst the many years going back to Mr. Menard of $14,000 that applies to this property. And that is, I think, all the pertinent things. He will be required when we're done here to produce this map in the back in the large AE format on Mylar so that I could sign it and present it to the county tax surveyor. Once that is complete, then he can get his permits and do building and that sort of stuff with it. Okay, so my recommendation is approval.
Okay.
All right.
Question?
Yes, sir.
I'm curious about the the drainage that's on the north side of the property between that and the the other house. That's the, I think, remember, we were talking at one time that that is an area of heavy water goes.
It is. It's just to the north of that. It's on the Ballard property primarily.
Okay.
That it comes off, I believe, your property onto the Ballard's property, then heads on down to the Seventh A Street complex and through that slough eventually.
So it doesn't.
It does touch on it, but it it, any requirement here for this, we will, for building, we will need to have a storm, and that's part of the conditions of this.
Okay.
Is a storm drainage will have to be identified for that.
To to move that water.
Exactly. The conditions under common law in Oregon and our Monroe land use code is that, one, you cannot stop water from going across your property, but you also cannot stop it. You also cannot divert it to other people's property simultaneously. So if you do channel it or something, it needs to be channeled in a way that diverts it either, in this case, out front to the storm drains on Main Street or in an appropriate way that that allows the water to go exactly once it leaves your property in the same path and manner that it it came on to it.
Anybody else have any questions of staff?
Steve, that the minutes say that we that property owners that were contiguous to this were going to be notified. How did we notify the property owners that?
The property owners are notified. So the the first step is that we go to Google Earth and we draw a perimeter around that, and we identify then all the lots associated with it. Then we go to the Benton County tax map, and we look at the property tax owner's address that is listed as listed on the property tax records. Then a letter is sent with the notice, the same notice is on our website, to those individuals, letting them know that there is a meeting, and it's basically a 20 day notice at that point.
So the the four people that are notified, single family dwellings, north, southeastern west.
Actually, there were quite more than that. It's more like about 12 people were notified.
And they were all notified.
All noted. We sent letters out, and I did not get any returns back saying that they, you know, addressed. The statute requires us, in some cases, we have had individuals say I was not notified. I said, well, we sent it, and then they realized, then they realized that the address that was on their tax records is not the tax records that they have, and so we asked them to go back to the Benton County tax assessor, make sure they have the correct address on there.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, now it's time for a public testimony. We we now move to, beginning with testimony in favor of the application. Before you make your comments, please sign in, make sure you signed in, and please keep your testimony, if possible, to around three minutes. Please provide any written materials that you wish to be part of the official record and the recorded, recording secretary. Are you the recording secretary?
On the recording and 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 Otter AI.
Does anyone wish to speak regarding this application?
I just have a question. Do you have any idea how many meters are going to potentially go into this area?
This would just have one meter. Just one meter. For is for a single residence. The second parcel, if and when it gets developed, would have a second meter. There was one meter on this property at one time. That was a very long time ago. That house has been since removed and the everything covered up and capped off. But there would just be one meter. Just one.
That's interesting. You've got to start. There's one year gentleman that exact, you know, previous position. She positioned back. I don't remember his name.
That would be Jim Menard, if a city administrator. Jim Menard.
Anyway, he said that the property sometime back had been sold, but the buyers didn't realize it wasn't a meter on it. Now, you're saying there is.
No, no, no. I'm saying a one meter will be installed.
So there's no meter.
There is no meter on that property as of this moment. Okay, right. No, there is no meter, but one can be installed on the property. There would just be one meter associated with that property.
And and this is right there at the dead end of Eighth Street.
I believe that is where I believe that is where the property owner would like to build their residences on the end, at the north end of this property. Yes, it would be, it would be. Well, where dead ends right now is the Ballard property, and so this would be at the end of that road on the east side of of Eighth Street. Yes.
Okay. Does there anybody have any questions? Or is there anybody opposed to the project or the partition? Any neutral parties? All right. Do any of the commissioners have questions? Is there any question? Is there any request for a continuance?
Are some of these numbers kind of off by just just a little bit?
Which numbers are.
Out by Main Street says forty seven point six seven, then forty seven point three eight.
Are you on, are we on the back page?
Back page map.
Well, this would be done by a surveyor, a licensed surveyor, so I'm hoping that they know what they're doing.
And then the ones up here are forty seven fifty five. It just seems kind of funny. Not that it's a.
Well, he has that. Let's see here. So forty seven plus forty seven is what, ninety four? That would be ninety five. And so at the middle, he has ninety five point one three feet, and that adds up to the bottom two numbers. And hundred nineteen point eight plus fifty three plus fifty three would be two twenty five, two twenty two twenty six. So I'm looking at how he's divided the numbers up in here and then looking at the totals, and they do add up.
Just seems kind of funny, though. It's not a deal breaker.
Okay. Any deliberation amongst the commissioners?
We actually talked a lot about it at the last meeting. It's really just a, was a chance for anyone to have any comments in the public to speak, and they were notified, and I think.
Do we have any motions?
The recommended motion is on the back on page five. Those would be.
Three oh seven, and then it goes across the.
Those are the old, those are old lot lines from from an original plat. Are we looking at the very back page like this?
Maybe those are the contour lines.
Okay, and are you looking at dotted lines? Are you looking at the kind of the wavy cloud?
It's like its contour lines, like through.
Those are, those are land contours.
Yeah.
That is how the land is, that the height or depth of the land. And on our site maps, we require the surveyor to give us what those contours are. That helps us decide if there's any issues, for instance, with storm drainage and that type of thing that needs to be addressed in the final plans. It's also required for the permits from Benton County when they apply for for that. But that's what they are. They're they're contours. So the height and height of the land.
I also, I heard just a little bit about the drainage. And I, I was wondering, is the city going to put some kind of drainage?
The city will look at what the proposed development is, and if necessary, we will use system development charge fees to extend the drainages to where it needs to be. We're doing that for another project that is something that we, as everyone in Monroe knows who lives here, water is an issue. And that's kind of an understatement, but we we understand that. Well, everyone that comes down off that hill, it just hits hits that hard ground, and it just sheets across it all the way down to the river and under your house and everywhere else. Yeah, so we will work with the property owners at the time that the building permit to ensure that the storm drainage, that the building does not exasperate any situation, the current situation.
Did any, did the owner happen to mention when he was going to start?
My my understanding would be within within twelve months.
Within what?
Twelve months.
I was just wondering if it's going to be in May time or December time?
I don't know. That I don't. Oh, yes, Mr. Rose. Okay. Also, quickly.
You're going to move to adopt, Torrin?
What's that?
I'm going to move to adopt.
I'm going to move it. I moved to adopt the findings outlined in the staff report or as modified by the planning commission, which we're not going to do, and approve the two lot partition as requested by the applicant.
My second.
Oh, well, a first and a second. Let's go ahead and vote. Mr. Grednis?
Yes.
Yes. I say yes.
Yes.
Yep.
All right, we have a unanimous decision. Adopt it, approve it. You're good. All right. Do you need to bang the gavel and all that between each one?
That's up to you, sir. Like that gavel, go, go for it.
Okay, next. We're going to go next. All right, we're going to go to the public hearing for six forty Depot Street. Make sure I got the right one here. Right. Okay, so I'm going to read this again. Pardon for my reading skills. No offense, but I went to school in California, so. Okay, so we're the, here's the order of things again, once again, and for those of you who weren't here at the beginning. There's going to be a staff report. There's going to be public testimony. There's going to be planning commission questions of staff, planning commission deliberation and final recommendation that evidently there's been quite a bit of discussion at other meetings, so there might not be a lot of of deliberation or communication. For those testifying this evening, please keep your comments to three minutes. Or this evening, no specific time limit shall apply to testimony of the applicant or, I believe, is what we typically like to do is we like to give those that are, you know, have the applicant plenty of time to explain their vision, but but others that are have questions, specific questions, please limit it to to three minutes. Persons testifying either orally or in writing may request a continuance to address additional documents or evidence submitted. If this request is made, please identify the new document or evidence during your testimony. Persons testifying may also request the record remain open for seven additional days to submit additional written evidence request for allowing the record to remain open should be included in your testimony. So the public hearing is now open. Does any commissioner have any conflicts of interest on this one?
I pick berries over there.
Tim picks berries. All right.
Were they delicious?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any reason believe that there are conflict of interest that aren't being disclosed? Okay, land use decisions such as the case under consideration this evening are evaluated against applicable criteria from municipal code and a comprehensive plan. A list of the applicable criteria for this case is available as a handout at the back of the room. They're actually right up here as as we talked about earlier. This is a good time to remind those testifying that you should direct your testimony towards the applicable criteria of the case or the criteria of the municipal code or the comprehensive plan, which you believe may apply to this decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by a statement or evidence sufficient to afford the city or other parties the opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeals to the state land use appeals, land use board of appeals, excuse me, based on that issue. The failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditional of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the local government to respond to the issue precludes the action of damages in circuit court. And we will now hear the staff report.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this is Mr. Oaks' long awaited proceeding with us, and what we're doing, what he would like to do is take the property on six forty Depot Street and divide it into five, six thousand square foot lots. This is currently in the GRA zone. However, we have, the planning commission and council are in the process after we get, we're almost done with our forty five days with the LCD to rezone this area to GRB, and implicit in this, in the conditions, we are also allowing with that understanding conditional use for GRB zoning with this in case the DLCD doesn't come back quite yet with it, since they take a lot of time. In our discussions with this, we know that Depot Street was never, was a at best, a private street by the Union Pacific Railroad. It's always been recognized as Depot Street. The current owner has worked with the Dundee Monroe Land Company, and this has a easement now for that access for his property to. access for his property to Fifth Street or Highway 99. There is sewer and water surrounding the property. So that's really not an issue from that viewpoint. There's a, one of the main drainage sluice for stormwater is on the south side of this property. The city council is also looking at how do we have a very bizarre strip of land for Sixth Street that goes for like about 10 feet at the south end to about 35 feet at the north end of this property of six forty. We're looking at how to make that work so that the new property owner can have part of that and also make sure that establishes an access for the residents that's adjacent to it. That would be Mr. Myers, Sheila and Harry Myers. So they could continue to have access which they have had since they put their home in. Otherwise, at this point, the partition is simply taking the lot, getting it into five partitions. The conditions are actually a little simpler in some respects because everything is essentially already in place in terms of utility, stormwater is, is very much adjacent. We would require that and I'm working with Dundee Monroe Land Company on this, but that easement access when they sell is to be transferred to the city as, as a, as a permanent road fixture that serves that, that particular area. But at the moment, it does comply with our land use codes and is also applicable to the comprehensive plan for housing lower higher density housing. Get my lowers and hires correct here. Higher density housing, which is in compliance with the middle housing rules and affordable housing laws that have been passed by the state of Oregon. So the recommendation at this point, given all that we have discussed, is that we approve the partitions and allow Mr. Oaks to continue with his development. With the understanding that the development work will also require that complies with the Monroe land use codes in terms of all the other issues and things before you tonight as the partition, the development is, you know, on top of that.
I see that, that weird wedge that you're talking about.
It is, it is a very interesting wedge and the city council and, you know, and also Mr. Myers, you know, we, we need to address the Sixth Street access to that. I don't see an issue with it. We just, we, the Sixth Street easement actually goes up what looks like a small alleyway. It isn't, is actually a Sixth Street. So we would make sure that Mr. Myers still had continued access to leaving his home.
Just that these partitions meet all the qualifications.
GRB.
Right. Whether or without resolving a Sixth Street wedge.
Without, with, without, would, would not be necessary. That is correct. The Sixth Street wedge is be a separate issue. It would be involved with probably vacating land under the Oregon statutes with the council.
So it could take a while, but.
It might, but, but we're looking at that because I think that would give, Fire Chief Barnes would be interested in having better access and roadway to those properties from the front, from, from the Depot Street side. So there's interest in doing that to move forward.
Where's, where's your nearest hydrant to there? Do you know by chance? Are we going to have a hydrant near there to?
You have a hydrant there on deep, the Depot Street stub. Okay. On Seventh Street. So there's one there. There is another that is down on Sixth Street in Kelly. Okay. And then we have a third one over on the Dundee Monroe property.
Okay.
Okay. That's up by the street. So you go right down Depot Street. So you have three fire hydrants, at least two of them are within 300 feet.
Okay.
Because I haven't seen the rest of the, the map, maybe for my own edification, what, why, what is the, why is it at a kind of an angle?
Because this Pacific second edition.
Okay.
For whatever reason, I think it has to do with the Union Pacific Railroad, but this is they put it in it, the whole north end of the city, north of Kelly Street at an angle.
At an angle. Okay. So this is, this is aligning with that.
Correct.
Okay.
Tonight, we're basically just proving the idea of, of the five lots, anything in terms of the development and what's going to happen. That is that the bunch, this is just the idea of allowing the, the separation into five.
Correct. And that, because that's the only way that Mr. Oaks can get his, his permits and move forward with, with the planning process to develop it. This property is a lot that's kind of hidden, but you know where the Wilbur Ellis fertilizer plant is. It is basically just behind that. Yeah. Towards, towards the west. Right. Going, going towards, going that way. Okay. It's kind of a vacant lot. There used to be a home there.
It's a lot of fruit.
Long ago.
Back there.
But it's just been a vacant field for all this time.
Is Sixth Street a dead end? Off of Depot?
Is it a dead, no, it actually should extend up to Pine Street.
No, the other way.
The other way? It just dead ends.
Dead end.
Yeah, exactly. It dead ends about 100 feet or no, no, excuse me. Forty-five feet from that first light green metal building structure.
Kind of runs into the railroad.
It does. It does. Exactly.
The question that didn't come up about the easement last time when we discussed a lot of this, right now, the easement is between two private parties for providing access. But it may become a city this city responsibility sometime in the near future.
Yes. And that is part of a conditional that we gave Monroe, Dundee Monroe Land Company.
And in the city, it kind of understands implications of.
Yes.
Purchasing or.
Well, they'll, they, it's actually in our Monroe land use code. Now whether this council or the next will completely understand it when that happens, I don't know.
I have a, is the.
But I do, but I do describe it that way, that we assume ownership of it and therefore develop a ton.
Is the Dundee property then partitioned where that, where that Depot Street goes between the?
It's not partitioned, no.
It's not partitioned, but it was.
It's just an easement through that allows that for access purposes. And it's a recorded easement.
Oh, that's okay.
Yes. It's recorded with the county. It's not a, a private agreement. It's actually recorded on the county tax rolls, on the county tax assessor's maps.
Any other questions?
So Depot Street's going to dead end at lot number one?
Correct. It does not extend through.
Okay.
It would run then into Mr. Myers' property at that point.
Yeah.
And the same procedures were followed notifying people of the.
Correct.
Okay. Great.
Including Dundee Monroe Land Company was also notified. And Dollar Dental.
If Sixth Street doesn't continue down, is this, are these, is this like a flag lot or something technically?
This would technically be a flag lot driveway. Correct.
Okay.
It'd be very similar to the end of Shelby, excuse me, end of 10th Street and Shelby, that cul-de-sac where I see a driveway going straight down.
Yeah.
That, that services four homes. It would be a very similar to that.
I, I, just so nobody's surprised, but is the easement in place now or is it in the works?
No, it is in place now.
Okay.
I, that was one of the holdups for this because the county did not show it. And so I had to work with the county tax assessor to make sure that it was legally recorded.
Because a partition would be very difficult to do without that easement in place.
It'd be impossible because our land use codes would, would not, and Fire Chief would not be happy with it.
Okay. So that's in place and recorded. Okay. Great.
Any additional questions?
Who owns TL five, five two zero one and TL five two zero zeros?
That would be five two zero one is the city of Monroe. Five two zero zero, I believe is Fisher. Five two zero one actually extends right up to the back sledding glass store of the Fisher's residence.
So it's their backyard.
Yes.
That they're.
Another, another fire to put out at another time is, is a easement the city has and how, how that property was allowed to be built with that easement in place. Even the title company doesn't know. So.
That's why we're here.
That's why we're here.
Okay. We're now going to move to the public testimony, beginning with those in favor of the application. And if you could make sure you signed in if you do have or in favor. Anybody in favor? Anybody opposed? Anybody neutral?
Highly contentious.
Set that on the record. Yeah. Back that up. All right. See, make sure I'm doing this right. That we don't have any questions. Is there anybody talking? All right. Is, so there isn't a request for a continuance? We wanted to keep it open.
The people. They're partitioning their own property. Yeah.
All right. Time for deliberation. Any?
Again, we really had, we really had the discussion at our last meeting. This is just kind of a, it was to give people in the public, not creating to respond. We met our obligations and here we are.
All right. You mean, we have a motion?
I moved to adopt the founding findings outlined in staff report and approve the five lot partition.
You have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Commissioner Strand has a second. Let's go ahead and. John?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes. Yes?
Yes. Yes.
Yep.
Have a unanimous decision. Thanks for your patience.
All right. Good luck.
All right.
Run careful.
Fight.
Review.
All right. Am I doing the right thing here?
You are.
I am.
The.
One twenty-five South Fifth Street.
That's it.
And you are now out of public hearing. This is not a public hearing.
I love when you bang.
I'm not very. All right. Sorry about that. I'm not, it's not my, not my thing. All right. Steve?
All right. This is a, this is a planning commission review of the, the proposed, the tumbleweed. I like this. I like the name.
Yeah.
The tumbleweed tap house. Brady Croson, Brady and Mason Croson would like to do this. We, we reviewed this with the, with Brady, a meeting or so ago. I've, I've attached the information on the back. Basically what they're looking for is approval to proceed commercial operations. We, we asked for a few things from them and they provided this on the very back page. You will see, and we discussed this last, this is same, and you actually see my notes on there as well. I would be working, I think the one big issue that we had was the proximity of parking to the existing silos. And I would be working with Brady on making sure that, that, that it was safe for both of those operations to go by. Otherwise, compliance with any painting would need to be with our color schemes for the Riverside District. That's in the conditions. They are going to provide is notice an ADA parking, which is, they need to have at least one of those. The alcohol is actually minimal on this. They're not going to be serving hard liquor. They will need to be, of course, in compliance with the, any OLCC regulations. If they choose and that my understanding is they would like to put some food carts there. Part of the condition too, is that they need to make sure that any, if, if these are not self-contained, any waste of those, our system will have to go through a grease trap, just as the one Ignacio's does over on the DL, the MLCC property. That's a federal requirement, but they of course make us enforce it. Otherwise, I, I think the Crosons have done a wonderful job of narrative. Their narrative is great. They have complied with all the checklists, the extensive checklist that we have here and did a nice job with their diagram on the back. I think that's, a lot of folks get hung up on that site diagram, but I think this is a great example of one that you don't need to have an architect or someone draw it up. I think that's exactly what we're after. Shows what we need to do. Going forward, the city is going to have to look and address the downtown core, as we've discussed, with safe passage across Highway 99. That's going to be imperative going forward, particularly if we, when we get, I'm not going to say if, when we get our pedestrian bridge over there. It's going to be a busy downtown and I'm hoping that the tumbleweed, the silos, the mineral arts center, Long Timber, Mystic Croson's, Christmas Junction. And I, even the museum, let's get more traffic to the museum. So, but we're going to need to make sure that the pedestrians can get back and forth safely over there. And that's the city responsibility, not, not the, not the Crosons responsible.
I'd like to see the more parking. I remember that was one of our questions, but that really, the, the diagram really helps a lot.
It does. And I also understand too, then, and I know, you know, what the city's also looking at some property changes and swaps that might give us some more parking down there next to the lift station. Down that area, that would also be in proximity to the bridge. So that street is Pike Street that goes down. And then it cuts in what we call Cravella Street. Unmarked, but there they are. But we would like to utilize that and the parking. I, I know that when the roses developed, Mr. Rose, it will also be looking at developing the property that is currently used as a parking lot with permission by the Nystroms. He'd like to put a, also some sort of beverage shop with maybe some sort of, of bed and breakfast or a short-term rental above it. So the Nystroms will probably utilize, reutilize parking across the way. But again, I think we need to, the city needs to look at how we can, and O dot, get people safely back and forth across the street.
Well, and as a parent of teenagers in our community, it's just, it's going to be wonderful for our high school students to have a place to go. You know, just to do different things. Like we have, we have a toddler park. We have things for younger kids, but we are missing the mark greatly on our adolescent and teens having a safe place, a community center or other than the library. The library is fabulous about, you know, but it's just a hub for them to go and get a soda and hang out in a safe place and not have to drive 99 to Junction City or, you know, do all these things. So I just think it fits perfectly in what I think we all want for our town. So.
I, I think this is going to be a very nice expansion. For tonight. I, I love the concept. I think it's, I think, I think the Crosons have well thought this out from a business mind viewpoint.
All right.
So on the page, what is it for? I need to put my glasses back on. I can't even see the numbers on my own things here. Back of page four is a recommendation in motion.
One quick question, Brady. As the food cart that currently is the like on the Wilbur Ellis property, are, have they been approached about being one of the food carts here? Wilbur Ellis property, are, have they been approached about being one of the food carts here, do you know?
I honestly haven't said anything.
Okay. Right, right. Right. Sure. They might, they might be interested as opposed to alone, they're being by themselves, yeah, and if they're going to be with a group, that might be a.
Yeah, it's delicious too.
It is good.
All right, do we, any other questions or discussion? Does anybody want to make a, a motion?
I'm going to adopt the findings and approve the activities for our tap room, tumbleweed tap room, and I'll second it.
About first and a second? John?
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes, yes.
Yep.
You're good. Can I suggest that we go over the, do the minutes real quick?
You may, you may, and sir, I actually had that under other business, but sir, you may insert that anytime.
Let's just take care of the minutes right now, because I know that, and it probably has some grammar correction.
This is the, uh, this is the first set of minutes done by, um, Misty Croson, who was our.
Very complete.
Very, she, this is her first set, she also did, I can lickety-cut the council men, this is like, why have I been doing this all this time?
They're very complete.
Yeah, very nice, very nice. See, I wasn't here, that's where all these discussions were. Detail discussions.
Tim ran a good meeting in your absence, Fred.
I was standing on a ladder twelve feet in the air in a low parking lot in Bend, Oregon.
Not a good idea.
A great idea.
Not.
That's not even. Pouring down rain.
Why are we doing this?
Look at his insurance.
We were, we were, we were changing camera batteries.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes as read.
Second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
You did a commendable job.
I will pass that on.
All right, now, sorry Steve, I got things all, or, or.
Okay, we're.
Aight.
Now, are we doing this conditional use of the?
This is your, uh, we've already, we even discussed this so many times, it seems like we've already passed it, but this is, uh, uh, Mr. Jody Khan's property, uh, this is the one on First Street. Uh, we first started with a partition, that partition, it was what we call a lot line adjustment. Um, it was originally the vacated street that, uh, was part of Fourth Street, so way back in the seventies. Uh, it was vacated, one half went, uh, to the east to the property that's now owned by the Ruizes on that side. That is, uh, uh, went to the GRA zoning. Uh, the second part was adjacent to the commercial zoning, went by law goes commercial, so that part of the street is, was repartitioned, um, through a lot line adjustment, I shouldn't say partitioned, it was a lot line adjustment. Um, it is currently commercial. Mr. Khan would like a conditional use to allow that use of that property to put a manufactured home on that would meet the, uh, criteria for setbacks and all that. He has already rerouted the, um, existing sewer, that was quite an interesting evolution. Thinking that it goes one direction and nope, it goes the other, um, I originally thought it went across the stream and staff and the plumber said, nope, it goes straight east and guess what? It goes straight east and then goes north. So anyway, um, it's been done, the lot line, it's been, we have easements in place, uh, so it is at this point ready to put a structure on the property. What it needs however, if you're going to put a residential property, is it needs a conditional use for residential, because it's a non, because to do that would be a non-conforming use. So, uh, at this point, um, I, if there's any, we have discussed this a great deal in the conditions and, um, of the the staff report would be the same as minutes and notes of previous meetings. But at this point, it's basically sending the notices out to the folks affected, uh, within two hundred and fifty feet of the property. Uh, and then would come to you next month or next in January, uh, as approval for conditional use for residential rather than as commercial, so at this point, if I'm, I can accept, you know, anything you have in terms of comments, uh, additional considerations, conditions. That's why this is on the agenda.
I think it's a good use because we're dealing with, it's all surrounded by homes and it's kind of an odd duck right now.
It is.
And so to, to, I, I think it would, it's, it's kind of a no-brainer really.
It would also allow Mr. Khan, say if he wanted to put a residential there, but the commercial part, say if he wanted to expand his mini store, um, south, it would allow him to do that without hurting the home that was already there, whereas right now, if he wants to do anything, he would have to evict the people that are in that or, you know, not rent it out if he wanted to do something, so it gives a little bit more flexibility to the landowner, um, otherwise.
Where you, uh, put in a condition for remonstrance?
Yes, this would be for, for First Street, correct?
Right.
Yes.
The only thing I'd add for later, later. Anything ever come of that street?
If it does, or it might be a situation where if it goes commercial, it needs a full, full thing, if it goes commercial. Or if it has, um, at some point, if we do develop that, it, there's a condition for a path for connection, because that's also in our comprehensive plan. Is connection up First Street, that First Street easement and up Third, so it, there would be, you know, a part of that as well.
So remonstrance or a path or?
Right, some sort of remonstrance that would, that would include that concept, because it's in our comp plan.
And just to clarify, the conditional use doesn't, um, it, it still remains, um, in the condition, it still remains commercial.
It still remains commercial.
And it can be reverted back to commercial as needed as.
If, if, if the landowner decides it or upon sale.
Okay.
Okay.
So that will come, if there's, I will include all those comments and, uh, it'll come before you as a land use hearing, um, next month.
I just think it's smart to be able to do that, I mean, it's, yeah, it, it leaves the options open to the land, landowner and yet it, you know.
Fits in.
It really fits in with, with the community.
And it's, it's better than vacant land.
Yep.
All right. Does, was there any more, uh, um, development of the, of the potential of development of that, of the field, the loving field, is that, is there any movement on that?
Yes, there is, as a matter of fact, I'm talking to engineers at the moment about placement of utilities, storm drainage.
Oh, wow.
Um, they've actually given me a preliminary plot of it, so I would expect to see that before you, probably in February or March.
Okay. And that still includes commercial, uh, coming up against the highway?
That strip up front is still commercial, I am still looking forward to my gas station in ANW.
Where's the sewer pipe going?
The sewer will connect to Third Street, Third and Oak.
And that's big enough?
It's an eight inch and it is, according to Civil West, it's big enough for what they plan to do there anyway. Um, I probably will ask, uh, since there will be more, several homes there, I might look at, um, replacing, it's the old concrete pipe. I would look at replacing that with a, with a PVC.
That sewer pipe still goes under the ball field?
Yes, it does. It goes straight down Third Street, kind of goes kitty corner from the ball field, straight over to the, um, uh, high school, behind the high school, down behind the track and then to the lift station. Now, replacing that with PVC is one option, but there's also options to reline it as well. And with old concrete pipes, they now, they had, the technology is there to actually go in and what they call line it, which basically puts like a plastic fiberglass, plastic pipe inside the existing um, unit, however, Civil West has also recommended a ten-inch pipe and not an eight-inch. Particularly if that would be servicing, say, at a light industrial or something of that nature, um, in the existing brickyard. Part of this proposal too would be looking, because it is currently light industrial, this land. And so part of that would be taking the GRB that's in the pit, um, on the brickyard and swapping that for the loving land, so the brickyard would go to light industrial. Um, and still keep our light industrial inventory in town and would take the GRB and put it into, um, the loving property. And there is a six-inch main going to servicing that, um, two fire hydrants, eight-inch sewer, the six-inch goes down to the high school where it joins, uh, an eight-inch main. So there is quite a bit of water, um, in that, to serve, to serve that area.
Would it be who, the city to have the sewer pipe move somewhere else?
It would behoove the city to either move it towards the street, down First Street in that direction, reline it. Um, abandon the section, you know, move it to, to, to the highway and abandon the section under the, uh, ball field. Um, something of that nature. At least look into it, the engineers have looked into it at one point and gave us several recommendations, but, um, the more if we, particularly if the light industrial would start, we would need to do something with that, that line.
All right. Any other old business?
The only other thing I have is I just wanted to make sure that, um, uh, you're aware the UGB update, we're using the expedited uh, process, we mentioned that last month and I mentioned it at council as well. The state of Oregon has an expedited UGB process to move up to fifty acres into your UGB without having to go through the entire planning process that usually is required. What will be required of you folks, and I'm hoping to get word back from the DLCD on this shortly, is that in January, we would need to move this, start moving this formally through you folks, because you need to align it with the comp plan and provide that recommendation of the LCD. So that does become a planning commission action, uh, at that point, and then it would go to council for approval and then um, onto the DLCD for them to ratify the, um, UGB process.
So that'd be a good work session.
Yes, it would be, it would be, I, and I'm, and thank you, that's actually what I was thinking, was a joint work session in January. Which we haven't done, I don't think, the last one we did was with Benton County.
And the comp plan being addressed, is that something that needs to be added to?
Uh, the comp plan, um, maybe we need to add to it, but I, as I look at it right now, we would not need to. However, as we've discussed in a previous meetings, uh, coming up this April, uh, actually in a few months, it seemed like a, like, oh, that's next year. Well, next year shortly here, um, getting a TGM grant to update our, to work with us to update our, our comp plan.
Every five years, we need to.
Yes, and that would also be a wetlands, a new wetlands inventory, as you folks have told me, um, from your previous experience, that not only can be done, but should be done.
Yeah. There's a building application on Orchard Street now?
We do, um, and I'm having to, uh, we're going to have to extend some sewer and water to it, this is the Pecorella property.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, I'm also working with Ross, uh, Bootchert of, uh, North Saniam um, paving, who's, he's working with that twelve acres of property, uh, between the school and, um, Red Hills. And, uh, so we're working something out, but at the moment, I, I need to extend water and sewer to them. Uh, what they will be getting is, uh, that their Seventh Street stubs out that direction. What we're going to do is, uh, allow and put a driveway in, um, with the, with the same criteria we did for the Habitat for Humanity at the, uh, north end of Ninth Street. That is actually a easement that goes around and would eventually connect the Shady Oaks at some point. We basically said, yes, you may do this, you need to keep it, your driveway maintained. Uh, but at the same time, understand this is not a driveway, it's actually the city street and we're allowing you to use it as such until the city develops, uh, Ninth Street fully out. It would be a very similar, um, agreement, saying that when Seventh Street becomes developed, you're responsible for your part of the improvements. And that's, and that's just an update for you folks, this is ongoing, they've already paid their SDC fees, um, there, we're, we're now getting ready to put a home there. It's a small home, but it's for, um, uh, for his parents.
So the twelve acres, suit and water is tied to that twelve acres that will run down that easement?
It could, and that's why I'm talking to him about it as well, I want to make sure we place it so that it's advantageous for all the properties.
All right. Anything else?
Oh, with all this new building we having, uh, is it possible to, uh, place in there, we need some play structures in our parks?
Well, um, actually, because they're paying SDC fees. That's what they're there for, those SDCs, we have a parks SDC.
So that would be the park, um, committee would have.
Yes, the parks, the parks committee would then.
Make a decision and make a plan.
Exactly.
I think the issues with the Red Hills is that was wetlands, we couldn't.
Well, I have had some, you know.
Improvement.
Yes, we can, and we could actually put play structures on there, I, I've, I've identified with them, it's, it's moving of dirt, not use of it, it would, what they don't want you to do is paving it over. Okay, with impervious things, you can certainly put a play structure in there. Um, they, they don't want us to pave it, so if you wanted to pave it and put a basketball court in, no. If you wanted to put like we have out here for the toddler park, yes, absolutely. Want to put some trails in there, perfect, plant some trees, go for it. Move more than fifty yards of dirt, hmm, need a permit. But this wouldn't necessarily require that, or add more than fifty cubic yards of dirt.
But that's per year.
Per year.
That's per year, that is correct.
Yeah. Yeah, we learned that you can change wetlands from wetlands to no longer wetlands.
Yes, that's right.
Just going to take you.
One, a few, a few dump trucks at a time.
Dump trucks at a time, that's right.
Well, and I always thought at TNT, it would be nice to have a play structure because of the, the baseball and the softball and all that you know, with the youth things, it would be really nice for some of the siblings instead of running around down by the river or, you know.
And also, I think another one would be to get some fencing in for a larger dog.
Yeah.
In pound.
I, yeah, we, I think we'd had a lot of conversations around that, that, that parks workshop.
And I think that was one of the, uh, we actually had more than a few recommendations for the larger dogs to have an area to run around in. Uh, but also not run into people, kids and all that, um, in the park, so. Yeah, I think there's some, there's some, a lot of room for the parks committee to redesign that park a little bit.
Okay.
It's, it's heavily used.
Yeah, it's getting more and more used too. Anything else? All right, thank you everybody for coming tonight, and we're done.